I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the Stanley County School Board meeting for June 25th, 2024 is the special call meeting. I will call on Dr. Rifa Slefler for our invocation and pledge.
Dear God, thanks so much for letting us together tonight to make decisions for our county and our teachers and our students and the whole community in general. Let us make decisions that are pleasing in your sight and take care of the needs of everyone in our community. In your name we pray, amen.
First up on our agenda tonight is closed session. We will go into closed session for personnel matters, NC general statute 143-318-11A6, student matters, NC general statute 143-318-11A1, attorney-client matters, general statute 143-318-11A3, and acquisition of real property, NC general statute 143-318-5. I will now entertain a motion.
Maybe we'll go into closed session.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we are now in closed session. Agenda is the budget amendment, or no, I'm sorry, I skipped. The next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Board members, you have had the consent agenda in your board docs. There is the June 4th, 2024 regular meeting, the June 13th, 2024 special call meeting, and the June 20th, 2024 special call meeting.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this is passed. Now, next up on the agenda, I have curriculum instruction, Mr. Plummer with the Avid High School.
Thank you. This actually came from committee, from the instructional committee in our, if I turn back time, we've talked about it in both our April and our May meetings. What we have is the Avid elective course that can be offered at high schools. Our schools are still working through getting numbers fixed in their scheduling. Scheduling is not finalized. What this would do is just allow for that Avid course to be utilized if it were appropriate within the school's schedules and to give them that opportunity to support that. Dr. Dennis, Ms. Raper, myself, Mandy Melton, we've been in a lot of conversations with principals to help support that scheduling and what that looks like and making sure that we're utilizing that course where and how it needs to be used versus just throwing it out there for the sake of it, making sure that we are keeping a stronghold on our core instruction and utilizing Avid as a support where it's deemed necessary along the way. So, the course is there, it's provided through Avid, they create the curriculum, they provide all of that for us. It's just a matter of where it can be utilized and how to best utilize that with our students to monitor that growth and support that along the way. So, what we're looking for is just the approval of the course and then on the backend, we can handle how and when it's used to support schools where it's needed.
You need a motion.
Board members, you have had this document in your board docs. I will now entertain a motion to approve the course for Avid for the high school elective.
I move to approve the additional Avid course option.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This is passed, thank you.
Can I ask just a few questions?
Absolutely.
Well, it went, it's not, I know we need to approve the curriculum and I'm all in favor of doing that, so. At this point in time, what schools do we have that we know for sure this is going to be on their schedule for next year?
Well, right now, the way that I were planning for it has gone. Ms. Pennington, both Almaral High School and North Stanley High School attended the training this summer to be able to utilize it if it were to factor into their scheduling. They created professional development plans while they were at their PD session this summer of what that rollout would look like over the next semester, over the next year, and then years down the road to come. Ms. Pennington, prior to the PD that they attended for Avid had already worked in where it might support in physical education and being able to utilize that with PE, so it's not taking away an elective side when it comes to the core classroom. And then, we've been working with Dr. Russell at North Stanley High School for what that could look like and how it could be utilized on that front.
So, do we have, do you know right now, like, how many teachers we have that have been trained in Avid and are ready to go with that?
So, when it comes to the actual training, the Avid training, they are looking for a team of eight people from a school to go. That can be principals, assistant principals, deans of students, counselors, all the way down to teachers. When it comes to the actual Avid elective course, there's a separate course within that training, that professional development, that those teachers are trained to teach the course. So, the course and going to the conference and the first part of that is just the first part of getting to know Avid, then beyond that, there are other sectors of training that take place after that. Our middle schools who have had Avid in place longer than the high schools have had as that elective course, we have two teachers that just finished their second round of that training to complete what they need. So, it's not a one-and-done type thing, it is multiple layers of training across.
So, what the high school's going to have to look at now, now that they've had some training and now that this course is approved, is how they want to use their allotments to implement Avid, just the same as the middle school did, because I'm going to use West Stanley, for example, my daughter's in Avid. And so, they decided to take and look at their electives and decided to add Avid. Of course, they had to lose a little bit on elective side to do it, to meet their allotment. So, these are the decisions now that the high schools will have to make when they go to scheduling their Avid courses. It's a good question.
Well, and part of those conversations have just been, we don't want to make this core class end up having 33 students in it to open up an Avid course where there may be 13 students that are interested, especially those tested content core areas and making sure that we are being mindful of those areas as well.
Because it truly is or should be set up as an elective.
Right.
In order to do that, like Dr. Dennis said, you've got to decide how you're going to use your teacher allotment in order to be able to do that. My concern and what I don't want to see happen is that, especially in a high school, that we don't pass that off to a guidance counselor or a dean of students or that I think are already understaffed in those areas and overworked. So, I definitely see the need for it, though. I did have the opportunity along with some others to go to that conference last summer, so it's definitely something that we need in our schools. So, I just want to make sure, you know, we're just giving all the support we can. And every school's going to be a little different, you know, what works at Alma High School might not work at North Stanley High School. So, there may be that they need to do something different, so.
Well, and that's been part of our conversation too, thinking about, because there's already the Avid elective at North Stanley Middle School, not stifling those students and not giving that opportunity to grow, what does that growth look like and how do we offer and provide that?
That's one area where I really want to see that succeed, just because it is at that middle school and for them to be able to continue on with it as a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, is really important that we don't let that fall by the wayside.
Absolutely.
Well, I'll just add to that, because I was at that conference with you, Ms. Whitaker. It is an elective and it is, you know, a course. However, the whole time we were there, it isn't a program, it isn't a one-teacher type thing, it is more of a mindset, a philosophy that is used school-wide and I would say community-schoolwide, you know, counselors, PE, the whole organization that adopts the Avid mindset takes on all of that. And so, I would hope that even if the elective is not fully in place, that that training does go into the school mindset. And I think that's what we're working towards, whether they get it all situated or not. I hope that we do have it in all of our high schools and all of our middle schools before too long, because it really is a very unique opportunity for our kids to have a part of it.
Yeah, and I even had conversations with principals this week at our retreat about what that could potentially look like at elementary school and getting those kids thinking about that sooner and being able to grow with it versus it just coming on later. What could it be if we had opportunities like that sooner?
And I agree, some of the strategies, especially, you know, Wicker strategies and stuff like that, could really benefit our students when it comes to advancing their academics. I couldn't agree more.
So, Mr. Plummer, does it look like it's going to happen this fall or is it just something we're going to be working on over the next few years?
No, I mean, part of it was principals were just kind of waiting on scheduling. Before they do one thing and then have to go back and redo an entire master schedule, they were waiting to make sure that the course was approved by the board before they moved forward with it. So, they've already been thinking and strategizing for what it could look like, what staff could be in place. So, it can certainly be a fall 2024 implementation.
I think we can give you a much better answer in the next board meeting.
Any other board member comments or questions for Mr. Plummer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the budget amendment, Mr. Duddy.
Okay, in your board packet, you should have budget amendment and it's labeled Stanley County Schools Budget Amendment Number One. Excuse me. Each fund has its own separate page, some of them has actually two pages. First of all, the first page is our state public school fund. You'll see what our beginning budget was at the beginning of the year. We actually received a little over $10,500,000 in budget adjustments for our state funds, which ended up our amended budget at $72,839,174 and some change. Flip over to page two, that's our local current expense budget. You'll see that we started out at $15,200,000. We had a slight increase there of $254,000. Majority of that is our fines and forfeitures. We received back in August a significant amount of fines and forfeitures that had, that should have come in in our school year '22, '23, and it was roughly about $165,000. So, that's majority of that budget amendment that's for Fund Two. And that ends up with $15,454,000 and some change in local funds. Excuse me. Our next two pages are our federal funds. You'll see that on page two of that, our budget was, started out at $16,734,000. We roughly had almost a million-dollar budget amendment of $928,000, which ended up $17,663,000 in Fund Three. Our next page, five, is our capital outlay fund. We actually received a little, almost $1.4 million in budget amendments. The majority of that is where we've had to allocate our fund ballots to cover some things that were needs, necessities, that Keith has found as he come onboard back in September that we had actually had to do as projects. We're hoping that maybe, I've allocated that $1.2 million. Some of those projects are going on this summer as we speak now, some we are actually looking at possibly will go into next year's budget. So, that may be when the final audit is done, we may not dip into fund ballots that much in capital outlay. But I had to budget it because those are items that we were talking about doing, whether we submitted purchase orders or we received quotes, or he actually had people to come out and give us ideas of what it was going to do to, or what it was going to take to administer some of these projects that was needing to be done. So, as we finish the audit year later, on the next few months, that amount may change when it comes to fund ballots appropriated for capital outlay. Page six is our child nutrition fund. We started out at $5.6 million. We've roughly had a budget amendment of $319,000, ended up with almost $6,595,600. And page seven is our special revenue or our Fund Eight is what a lot of people still call it. We started out on page two of that, we started out at $2.4 million. We've had roughly about an $810,000 budget amendment, which is, a lot of that is our restore grant that we actually end at September 30th. We had some carryover funds there, they actually allowed us to reallocate for this school year. So, majority of that is that, we ended up with $3.2 million in Fund Eight. Our overall budget for the '23-'24 school year at this time is $120 million, and you'll see that on the last page. So, if you have any questions, I'll entertain those at this time.
Mr. Duddy, on the, I can't remember which page it was, but yellow school buses, did we have to buy buses? Is that what that?
We had, we're being allocated one yellow bus this year. We have to, and that's, we do not pay for that, that all comes from the state, but we have to run that yellow bus through our financials. So, we have to do a purchase order, we have to send that purchase order to Thomas Built Buses, which is the vendor that the state gets the buses from. And then, as they, as we receive that yellow bus, which we have not received it yet, we will sign off that we've received it. And then, they will make two payments per year, up to three years, for that. And that budget carries over to that year. So, at this point in time, there's nothing being paid. There was a purchase order, I had to cover that budget for that purchase order out of that funding, but when the state makes the first payment, that'll come through us as an allotment and then that, you'll see that as next year, how that works when it comes to where it has to be budgeted for yellow school buses. But it's no money out of Stanley County Schools.
Okay, and really for the public here, so $120 million sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money.
It does.
But the overwhelming majority of that's highly restricted in the way of federal grants and state allotments.
Yes, very much so.
That have either federal law or general statutes that dictate where and how that money is to be used, so that you or Dr. Dennis or the board does not have authority to redirect those funds. I think just estimating right here, we had 15.2 in local expense and roughly 3.6 in capital outlay. Capital outlay has to be used for facilities, but the only unrestricted part out of $120 million is roughly 15 in local expense. Is that correct?
That is true, yes, sir.
Okay.
And you'll see, you know, based on that first page, that 75, almost 73 million of that is your state budget. So, I mean, you don't, if you take that off the top, you're still dealing with roughly a $50 million budget that still has restrictions from the federal guideline and also you have restrictions on your Fund Eight money as well.
Yep, and so, when we were looking at the rankings again, that is provided by the state, when we factored the state funding in there, along with our child nutrition, which acts sort of as an enterprise, hopefully you have a small amount of the capped profit, we're still nearly last in all of our funding mechanisms. I think the ranking with state was 107.
I think so, 107, 108, something like that.
Yeah, out of 115 school districts and there are 100 counties.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Very much so.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Duddy on the budget amendment one? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve of budget amendment one as presented.
Motion to approve budget amendment one.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, this is passed. I think you have one more thing for us?
A couple more things.
Or a couple more things?
The next thing is our continuing budget resolution. I know we have not yet have a state budget. We do have our allocation that we've got from the county commissioners, but we do not have a state budget. And at the time, when you do not have a state budget, you can't create a budget, so you're working with a continuing budget resolution. So, the next item would be for y'all to approve that we would work on a continuing budget resolution for the '24-'25 school year until a formal budget is approved by the board.
Board members, you have the document that Mr. Duddy has in our board docs. I will now entertain a motion to approve the continuing budget resolution as presented.
I move to approve the continuing budget resolution as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And now, for your third thing.
And now, the final thing, which I have to bring to y'all's attention, it's nothing that we need really action on. The action will occur when the final, when the auditor comes and presents you the audit report for the fiscal year of June 30th, fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. You have a preliminary finance expense report in your packet that is broke down by fund of what was spent, what with the budget, and what was remaining. They won't let know, you'll see on the first page is your state budget, there's a lot of figures there that has balances remaining. A lot of those are where the state gives us position allotments that are based on average salary. Our positions, at this point, we've used all our positions, both teachers, principals, instructional support, program specialist, CTE, all the positions have been used. Maybe there might be like a .01 or .02 remaining. That's very minute when it comes to a dollar figure. But a lot of those that you see, and a perfect example is number one, when it says $859,000 in teacher allotment. That is money that I'm, that yes, we are, will be sending back, but it's based on the average of those 395 teaching positions that we received. And like I said, as of this time, all 395 positions have been allocated and have been used. So, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. These are not monies that I have not spent as your finance director and that we're sending back negligently, because those are position allotments. And position allotments are your 001, 005, 007, 013, 004, and 006, okay? And that's pretty much on that. The only pot of money that we've got in here, well, not only pot, there's like a handful of these on page one that will carry over and there is some balances in those, that summer school remediation money and the PRC 85 money carries over into the next school year. So, there is balances there that will be spent during the summer and the first part of the fiscal year '24-'25, okay? And as you go through, you'll see there's a page for each fund, you'll see there's remaining balances. On page two of that, you'll see your local funds and you'll see that there's a remaining balance of right smart amount of money. There's still, that's money that's on our table. There'll be some bills that will come in in the next couple of months that will actually, the auditors will put back into fiscal year '23-'24 because that was money obligated for those expenses, such as if there was an electric bill that we have not repaid at this point in time, that they will put that back into '23-'24. If there's any kind of outstanding travel or anything of that sort from where we've had staff that maybe go somewhere during June, that will go in there. But on that balance that you see at the bottom down there, could be a possible fund balance increase, okay? Fund Three is the next one, that's pretty much what we're looking at carrying over in federal funds for next school year. The next page is Fund Four, that is your capital outlay funds. You'll see what was spent and what was not, that was left on the table there. The next page is your child nutrition account. You'll see that we're actually in a profit for our child nutrition account. I've estimated almost a $300,000 profit in child nutrition for this year, okay? And then, the last page is your Fund Eight. Any questions about that?
Just Mr. Duddy reconfirm, so the capital outlay budget.
That'd be about the page four or five.
The balance as of fiscal year end, June 30th, is 1.124 million.
Remember, that's part of that fund balance that was appropriated that will, that I'm hoping that we'll be, not be able to, we will not be appropriating that much fund balance, the balance, the budget once auditors through.
And as far as, maybe I'm skipping ahead here or two, or going back, but just to clarify what we're actually getting from the commissioners for the upcoming year, I know we don't have the state budget, we have the continuing resolution on.
The email that Dr. Dennis and I received last week, I think it was, yeah, it was last week. The current expense amount that will be, that's been approved by the county commissioners is $14,625,360. Article 44 sales tax is $875,000. Our teacher supplement grant is a million dollars and there's some stipulations on that. Of course, the Indy School Project, they put it in the email of 3.7, and capital outlay at $4,150,000. The only difference in the approved budget and what was recommended by the manager was the teacher supplement grant. There's a $500,000 increase there versus what was recommended. Our total budget from this year to what's been approved by the county commissioners is $1.5 million difference for local and $538,500 for capital outlay, excuse me.
Okay, and the Article 44 sales tax, $875,000, that was what, looking at their budget, that they're forecasting.
Yes.
That they'll generate over the next fiscal year under that tax. And that is, and I guess the law requires them to pass those monies through.
Yes, supposed to. Now, Article 44 is the sales tax that the state approved for economic development, economic development, education, and there was one more option, and I meant to look at it, Dr. Dennis, that's what we talked today, and I forgot what that third option was. Article 46 is your quarter cent sales tax and it is not listed on here. That is as a separate item because that's included in your current expense of the $14,625,360.
And the teacher supplement grant, does that fall under the local current expense?
It does, and it is, and because of being allocated as local current expense item, you have to share that with charter schools.
Okay, and what part of that do they get?
Well, we sort of estimated today, using the same figures that we have for '23-'24 school year of charter schools, they'll get probably roughly about $15,000 of that. Ugh, I'm sorry, my tongue's about to get tall. $50,000 of it. We roughly have 446 students in charter schools in Stanley County. Not, well, all the charter schools that we, I'm sorry, that we serve. The students of Stanley County Schools, there's 446. Our estimate for this year was roughly 9,100 students total with Stanley County and the charter schools. So, when you take that and divide it into the million dollars, that was about $48,000 and some odd dollars, so I said roughly about $50,000 of that, we go to charter schools for next year.
And correct me if I'm wrong, our current teacher supplement, the dollar amount that we have to pay out. we have to pay out, and this is uh a five percent supplement, uh it's is around one point eight to two million dollars.
This year, um and I've got that got that over there too, this year we've spent almost two point three million dollars in teacher supplements.
And we got uh a half a million dollars in that fiscal year.
Four hundred, four hundred thousand is what we're seeing this year for that.
Okay, so we got less than a quarter of of what it takes to actually fund that five percent when we're relative to, say, Cabarrus at twelve, and I think they got approved at thirteen for this upcoming fiscal year. And correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have that that uh what we prepared in front of me, and I apologize, but uh we had proposed to raise that teacher supplement to eight percent.
Yes, we did.
We felt like that that was a number, the board felt like that was a number that uh would help us be more competitive um in certain areas and and just across the board for our teachers, uh and that number was well north of of three million dollars.
Yeah, five, three four, some three, something like that. I I think I got that up here, but I it's like, I it might be closer to about three and a half million is what I think that was.
Yeah, and so in other words, you you don't have to, so the 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 million that we're getting um doesn't even cover half of our existing teacher supplement at five percent.
Yes.
And to get close to eight percent doesn't even cover one-third of that.
Exactly, exactly. And I and I'm gonna I'm gonna just go ahead and go ahead and tell you and throw this out there. Me and Jacob sort of threw some numbers together this afternoon, um in case this happened to be asked. When when you look at, when you when you look at five hundred thousand dollars, okay, what we could do with five hundred thousand dollars, that was less than a quarter extra of a percent for teachers.
So it seems like a big number, and it is to to many people, but when you have to allocate it across the board, it's it's pennies.
Yes.
It's not, it's not moving the needle.
Yeah, when you break it down amongst all of the teachers that we have that would be getting that supplement, it's very money, and for recruitment and retention, it's really gonna hurt us.
Yeah, and I do believe that, again, I apologize for not having be prepared tonight, but those rankings of the teacher supplement that Dr. Dennis, they don't publish anymore, but the year prior uh was one that we were uh near the back as well. We don't have that for last fiscal year and this upcoming fiscal year. It's all falling under, I think our rank in local funding was one oh two uh one one oh something out of a hundred and fifteen school districts, and with the state funding, we got worse.
Right.
At at one oh seven, relative to all the other districts. And our ability to fund, if I recall correctly from the state numbers, is fifty-ninth out of a hundred and fifteen districts.
Stop publishing those maps, but I may be able to pull that from another source.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that email, I do have it in front of me. And I wanted the people to, the teachers to understand that um it takes, you know, closer to three and a half million dollars to fund the eight percent, it takes um two million plus or minus to to fund the five percent. And that we've previously been getting, I think when I came on this board a couple years ago, it was three hundred and twenty-five thousand or three hundred and seventy-five thousand was all those allocated specifically for the teachers in the local current expense.
Yes, that's true, very much so.
And I know you mentioned one neighboring county, but we have several neighboring counties that their teacher supplement is quite a bit higher than ours, so.
Yeah, very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh there's also one thing about what they gave us this year, wasn't about a million dollars of that mandated by the state for the non-certified, not for the non-certified
We we have, we have to implement a classified pay scale for our uh classified staff. You know, that's something I've been talking about for over a year, almost two years now. So, you know, and and believe it or not, you know, people are have heard that, and so their their question is that could become an effect of July first. Uh of course, the state has told us until a state budget, they would not hold up, they would hold off on increases at this time because of possible retro. Uh we we had a com- had a meeting today, a webinar this morning, um and at this point, they're not, they're telling us to hold off on what the retirement rate's supposed to be for Jul- as starting effect of July first, because it's not um it's not in stone, even though it's a two-year by annual budget, and it was approved last year for this upcoming year, it's still is not a satisfactory until we have a full-blown approval from this General Assembly for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, yes, there is supposed to be July first of twenty twenty-four, an implementation of a pay scale that's that ties to the Office of State Personnel um uh pay scales that they use. So uh yeah, based on the estimate, there was one point two million dollars that was gonna get uh that have to be implemented to get us to that point um for our classified staff. So yes, Dr. um Lefler, um of that increase, you got to look at that. Now, I'm not saying all that's got to be, all that increase of one point two million is local dollars. You gonna have um state state allotments in there that's gonna be offset some for those classified positions that such as teacher assistance or or uh or transportation, because those are 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 non or there's also um uh the um PRC oh three, uh non-instructional support, I'll get it out in a minute. Those allocations that come from the state are for classified individuals. So there will be some allotment adjustments in that for that, but it's not gonna cover all your um classified positions such as child nutrition, all your staff there has got to be funded by the child nutrition program. You've got uh your all your maintenance staff, all your custodial staff, you've got um s- several office support staff members that are locally paid. So uh those those funds are gonna have to come from your local budget to cover that. And of course, you know, any increase that we have to do for a state-paid pers- person, your federal dollars have to uh have to cu- cover that as well as your local dollars.
So the increase we got doesn't cover our classified uh pay scale increase, or roughly does, but I think too, some of our higher need schools were gonna lose out, so our personnel's losing out, our athletic directors, our our coaches, we had recommended some some pay increase there.
You're you're looking at that as well.
Our alimony schools, we had allocated, I think, nine hundred thousand dollars in the budget for that. So it's basically, it seems like um twenty-three versus sixteen-ish that we're losing academic opportunities, uh the funding for those, and uh are less competitive on our personnel.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we had some of those.
Yeah, there were several positions that we put in the budget for that.
Um for band and things in there too, I don't think any of that.
Yeah. Yeah, we were looking at, we were looking at all those different areas and maybe doing some increases and stuff of that sort.
Lot of curriculum stuff.
Yeah, a lot of things.
There was a lot of curriculum stuff.
Around the students and the teachers. Um that we created a focus in that budget um that fit, that based on our numbers, put us right in those fifties uh ranking in the state. On a funding per pupil allotment.
Right.
So that met, you know, what our ability to fund as a county according to the government, uh the state government, uh and it addressed a lot of the needs of our school.
Well, and I would like to just take a second to um thank the Finance Committee and Mr. Duddy and his department for putting that line item budget together. And I know a lot of people in the public have seen that and really appreciated being able to see like what we were actually asking for and how much for each thing. I know that was something the commissioners had kind of requested of us, but I do know a lot of time and work went into that in that presentation, so I appreciate that. And I think it's been well received in the public, so thank you.
Um and just to throw out there also, um and you know, we we have it, we really have had a Finance Committee meeting um to discuss some things when it comes to next year's state allotments and the stuff like that, but we're also sitting with a loss of two hundred some thousand dollars in our low wealth money for next year. So um and you know, low wealth formula is based on the efforts, effort of funding from the county. So um so you know, if you want to go ahead and take that off the top for the million five that they're giving us, we're not really getting but a million three. Then we've got a million and two, we've got to spend on ca- uh classified pay scale, so are we really getting the increase?
And we're losing that money because um we're because we're holding too much in the county fund balance.
Low wealth formula has, low wealth formula deals with your tax base in your county and the funding effort that the county can put forth to your school system. So as that funding effort decreases, our low wealth decreases.
Because we're way off on our funding, our versus our ability to fund, we're being penalized.
Yes.
Yeah, that it's a really compu- complicated formula that has multiple things, but that is a big chunk of it, yes, is the ability to fund.
And I'd be glad to sit down and show you that formula, because I finally made some sense out of out of out of it, and it really, in the last four years, we've gone down from um, well, last four years, we've gone down some in low wealth. And and I just foresee, you know, if if we don't get some increase in funding that is more um more stable for for our area, that who's to say that low wealth might not become obsolete for our county? And remember, we're tier two. Once you are out of tier two, you no longer low wealth, okay? So it's not like you're going from tier one to tier two, you're already in tier two. There was two or three counties, um and I've got a list back in my office, that actually are going out of tier one status this year um for next year. But you know, they they gonna see a difference, but they're not gonna see a difference if they were going from tier two to tier to tier three. We get low, we get over three million dollars in low wealth money. So if we go to tier three and don't get that money, what where we're gonna find that three point five million, three point seven million dollars?
Any other questions for Mr. Duddy or comments?
As the Finance Committee meets, um I would be interested in seeing this formula and going over things with us, because it appears um after listening to the whole conversation with everything, that it is rather dire.
It is.
The funding, and so, I mean, I I think probably every board member up here would like to sit in on that, if you can go over that with us, yes.
I was gonna say, just prepare yourself, it's not super easy to understand, it does have multiple, um I think I'm finally starting to grasp how that.
Look at some different trends and stuff like that, and and think about, okay, what would it be if it was if we got this, or what would it be if we got that type situation?
And just to reclarify to the public, when we talk about all of this, it it's not the full hundred and twenty million, we have no say-so on.
Exactly.
The overwhelming majority of that, it's, we're talking about the fifteen million that allows our county to address the needs that we have here in the school system, and that's where we're we're really far behind.
Yep.
And you don't need a vote on this?
No, no action on that. That's just for me bringing y'all a financial report, the auditor, when he presents back in later in the year, y'all approve that.
Thank you, Mr. Duddy. Next on our agenda is personnel, um this is Dr. Carter.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. If I can draw your attention to the personnel agenda, of course, section one is for your information only, and section two does require your action. And with that, I'd like to give a shout out to our principals and to our HR staff for their diligence in interviewing and processing over approximately fifty new hires in the past two weeks. So I'd like to give them that shout out. But with that being said, I'd like to seek your approval for section two.
Okay, board members, um you have the personnel agenda in your board packet. I will now entertain a motion to approve section two of the personnel agenda.
I move we approve section two of the personnel agenda.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to your staff for getting all this on the on the agenda for tonight. Our next scheduled board meeting is to be determined, and I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.